Generator himself. Stack up a few. Incidences back to back and then there's a short period of remand usually and then that person comes back into town and we stack up another few so. Some of he can skew our stats, single handedly sometimes, but right now he's not in town. When you see the report there from Clark, there is one. The most serious file where it was assault on police officer with a weapon or causing bodily harm. No officer was injured in that, just let you know that was an individual who decided to throw his poop at one of our officers. So that person was then charged with assault with a weapon, but it didn't hit the officer. He was not injured, so don't be alarmed by that one. Just having a quick look, see if there's anything else that was struck out at me. Our impaireds are starting to pick up a little bit, just the nice weather again. I will do a quick detachment shout out to Constable Ryan Kazmar, one of our local constables, who is being presented with an impaired driving award. At the in, he'll be presented with that in May. So to earn that award, you have to have ten successful impaired driving. Convictions or with now with the provincial statutes that have taken the place. Ten, basically you've caught, he caught ten impaireds and I think there was only less than twenty members in all of the province who were able to go and receive this award. So he's being invited to an award ceremony in Edmonton and he'll, him and his spouse will be traveling down there for that. The other thing I'll say is the for that, it's called Corporal Cummins Watch Award. For that award, our new constable that we got from Hinton, Constable Sutherland Metz is also traveling down because he hit the same target and he actually hit it twice last year because you also get it if you complete ten drug recognition expert evaluations. And so he's a drug recognition expert, which means he can determine if somebody is impaired by drugs and they're driving, so he can complete that examination process, demand a urine sample and have that sent to a lab. And he did that more than ten times last year in Hinton. So and again, just an excellent resource for us to have locally and excellent people are coming in. Trying to think in the last month. Other than having Devron come up, there was the new corporal in town. So there's three of three corporals right now until I leave. So there's Constable or Corporal Brendan Fast, who was here last time. He's just into town with his family. Is speaks very highly of the town, his wife very involved with the Parent Link Center, doing lots of stuff, loving the pool, loving all the resources. So everybody seems to be good and the detachment's running well. Big change at the detachment, the other big change is our public service staff Kathy Blissette is moving at around the same time I am, but the end of this month. So she's worked at the RCMP detachment here for over twenty, twenty-five years. She's been a constant, constant feature. If you ever walk down the hallway of the detachment, they have the old staff photos that go back to the eighties and she's in almost every single one. So it's going to be a big change for the detachment to have her leave, but she's on to, she's staying with the RCMP. She's just going down to Grand Prairie to work in the office there, so. And that's pretty much it for us.
Well, thank you for that update and we're excited to see a new bunch come in and replace some that we're going to miss very much, but things change, I guess. And glad to hear you say such great things about the new staff sergeant. Is there any questions anybody would like to ask? Yes.
I don't have a question, but I do want to thank. How much it meant to the community, I know you were a big figure in town, so people appreciate it, so thank you.
So thank you very much.
So thank you and good luck in your new post.
Perfect, thank you very much.
We'll see you sometime again, I'm sure.
Yes, I'm sure you will.
So the regular council meeting minutes of March 27th. If there's no errors, could I have someone move to accept those, please? Counselor Librian, all in favor, carried. Could I have somebody accept the RCMP report, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor, carried. I know you're all really excited because I don't have a report tonight. I know there's a hockey game you're all wanting to get to, but I will answer any questions of fifteen five right now if you have those questions. I was at those meetings, so. That's the CRA. I don't know, did any of you get down to the at AUMA, AM Munis? No, they had a room.
They did make a presentation, Madam Mayor.
Okay, if seen no questions, could I have someone accept my report? For information. Counselor Welke, all in favor, carried. Committee reports, Counselor Anderson, oh, sorry, skipped over, Deputy Mayor.
March 30th, met with MLACC, the NDP Opposition Critic for Municipal Affairs. He certainly seemed receptive to our concerns, would not commit to anything if they were to form the government and then attended day one of the Spring Caucus or Spring Leaders Meetings, I guess, through Alberta municipalities. And then earlier today, the assessment presentation.
Okay, was there any, did you meet with any other?
No one, Minister Schultz canceled our meeting and then reinstituted, but didn't have time for us.
Okay, she's probably talking to Chester. Oh, yes, she was there. Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Anderson.
It sounded very interesting. April 5th, I was at a library board meeting. The meeting, they finally got their agreement. And on April 11th.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jessman.
Okay, I was in the city as well on the 30th and 31st. I really enjoyed the presentations down there and our meeting with the opposition. Last week on the 5th, I had a teams meeting with Government Alberta for the victim services transition in this coming year to talk about our local society and expectations and some of the changes that will happen for our staff and stuff. So that was a good meeting and I'll be presenting that to our board members here tomorrow. And that's it for, well, I was here tonight as well for the assessment. My report.
Thank you, Counselor Jessman. Counselor Lambert.
I have no meetings to report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Librian.
I also attended the conference on March 30th and 31st. And then as well on April 5th, the High Level Library Board Meeting and then as well this evening with the assessment review.
Okay, thank you, did you learn anything at AB Munis?
I did, yes, I enjoyed it, it was a lot of good information.
Could I have someone move council report or council? Did I miss you? Oh, sorry, I checked you off. Counselor Welke.
On March 28th, I had an FASD Society Meeting and I also attended the assessment meeting today and that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move council committee reports, please? Counselor Welke, all in favor, carried. Action list, is there any questions about the action list? Seeing none, could I have someone move the? Oh, sorry, could you put your mic on, please?
Is it working?
Yeah.
Hear me now, okay. Just for Director Straub, did you get anywhere with the mosquito control as from last year? We had talked about that last summer, I believe.
And the mosquitoes are coming out.
Thank you for the question.
Nope.
There we go, thank you for the question, no, we haven't followed up with them. They suggested to, once the snowpack was gone, then we'll give them a call because they want to look at the area as what normal water lay is in the area and not what's during the flood. So then the next couple of weeks, we should start arranging that, get them up here and have a look at it.
Thank you, is there any other questions? Okay, could I have someone accept the action list then? Counselor Librian, all in favor, carried. Upcoming events, so I have a question about community catch up. I didn't even know we were having it, guess I didn't look at the action list.
Madam Mayor, pass that question over to Director Clark.
Yes.
So the time of that, because Mr. Hunter's funeral is that same day, so I was just wondering what.
Um, so when we planned it, it was, I don't know, a bit probably before that.
Yeah, 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 I just was wondering what time it was.
Oh, sorry, I don't have the time, just give me one second here, I will let you know. I believe it's eleven till three, but I don't want to confirm.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, just for council's information. Mr. Hunter's funeral, the viewing is at 10 a.m. on the 22nd and the funeral service is at 1 p.m.
For those of you that didn't know. Mr. Hunter passed away and he's a longtime resident of High Level with Hunter Home Hardware. And so, yeah, for those of you that would like to go to the funeral, that's the time of it. At the funeral is at one. So I guess we'll have to be at Community Catch Up from one, from 11 to one.
Yes, and the event is 11 to three.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other questions? Okay, could I have someone move it, please? Counselor Jessman, all in favor, carried. So the monthly report from from administration.
Madam Mayor, councils should feel free just to address whichever department they would like to ask questions of.
Any questions to the departments? Yes.
This probably is, I'm not sure, Director Haley, Gavin, I think probably. Where are we, or how far along are we on the annexation of the airport? How close is that to happening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thanks for the question. I do have it in my to do list to get it done this month and my plan is to bring it back to Council for approval on April 24th for submission before the end of the month.
Thank you.
Any other questions for administration? Could I have someone move to accept the report? Deputy Mayor, all in favor, carried. Strategic Plan Review.
Madam Mayor, as before, please feel free to ask any department, any of the questions on their strategic plan process or progress.
I did enjoy reading it to see where we were. I just, maybe it's just me, but the status and the progress, is there a difference?
Director Gavin, would you like to explain the matrix?
Sorry.
Well, that's fine, so at the last quarterly update, when this was first presented, I believe it was the Deputy Mayor asked whether we could have a progress bar. So essentially, the status shows the percentage of the action item and then the progress will be updated in between every report. So you'll see for some of them, if it has sixty-five in both, it means that that sixty-five percent was done between the last report and this one. So then, next time, if you just have ten, you just have C10 in that, that column.
Yeah, it's coming back to me now. I was just looking like seventy-five percent status and zero percent progress, like that kind of doesn't make sense to me. Okay, that was my only question, is there any question, yes. Counselor Welke.
Just in general, I wanted to ask, what is our processor mechanism for beginning or tackling the, the projects that are at zero, that haven't been started yet, basically? How do we determine when we get rolling on some of these or when, when should council ask and that sort of thing?
Counselor Welke, that's in the timeline. So if you'll notice, say on the very first page, my very first one, Explore Partnerships with New and Existing Businesses, the timeline is the second quarter of 2023.
Okay, so, so then if we see that something hasn't been started, then, then we would ask, you know, because it's not following the timeline?
Yes, yeah, that would be where the council could be concerned or we will make sure that we try to explain that in advance.
Thank you.
It just, first time reading it, it's kind of for us slow learners. It is, I really enjoyed reading it. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move the strategic plan? Counselor Jessman, all in favor, carried. So the next one is all business, the responsible animal ownership bylaw.
Madam Mayor, Director Gavin will address the next two issues on your agenda.
Thank you, just some quick comments on this one. So there were quite a few changes from the draft bylaw that came to the March 20th council meeting. Everything that's been changed is in red. Anything that's in green was in the bylaw and just relocated somewhere else. The few items that we did cover, the discussion that we had is essentially in the briefing note and it shows you which sections have been changed or added. So I guess, all the other part is in the comments section as well. So where we talk about doing like provisions for cats, we did reach out to the Humane Society just with some preliminary questions on them being able to assist with this issue if we were picking cats up. Space is definitely the biggest issue that they have. So like we said before, we could start small, you know, with one trap if we were to go that route. Those provisions have been built into the bylaw. But there's going to have to be some review over time for sure. So we are planning to meet with them later this month and look at what else we can do. However, I feel like the bylaw as presented, I am requesting first reading tonight. Then we'll have three and a half to four weeks of public consultation. At the Community Catch Up, we'll have information as well. And then if there are any changes or amendments, we can do those before second reading in May.
Okay, council, what's your wish? Okay, Deputy Mayor moves first reading. All in favor, carried. Sorry. The next one is the Land Use Bylaw.
Yeah, so we discussed most of these at Committee of Hall. In the briefing note, I've just put together the changes, so there were three items that council provided feedback on. And then there were three other little changes that I snuck in there as well, so I've highlighted those for council's review. And again, the same thing, looking for first reading and any changes made before the second reading in May.
Council. Questions? What's your wish? Deputy Mayor moves first reading to the bylaw amendment. And public hearing to be May 8th, all in favor, carried. Okay, the next one is the Audit Update.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips has the Audit Update for Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I handed out a briefing note for our Audit Update. Along with Metrics, our auditors and CEO and also with council that we discussed on the March 27th meeting. We want to be transparent and do weekly updates with our auditors and also let council know at meetings to give a briefing note. So we had a, a meeting with Noel and Richard, who is our senior manager at Metrics and is also the senior manager on our account. We met with him today to just give a progress on their end of where they are at with the audit and on our end, where we are with our listings and any of our higher priority and outstanding items. As of right now, the forecast that they give us is that by Friday, if they have if they have everything that they need by Friday, they're still looking at about two to three weeks and finishing their audit process. So they still have multiple municipalities that they're auditing, obviously all on the same time crunch as we are. And so prioritizing staff time to do our audit. Right now, we have Richard, who's our manager on the team. We also have Jason, who is more of the senior auditor with, with Metrics. And then we have David, who is our student analyst, I guess, he does a lot of our listings. So I feel like it was a great meeting and maybe Clark can give some input. They're, they're more of just recommending that we prepare if we need an extension. Our recommendation is to just do that weekly update with them. Do our end dates on Fridays or in the morning and then also just keep council updated weekly if, if we need to or by our council meeting on the 24th, like we have Committee of Hall next week. We can do another briefing and then we have our council meeting on the 24th. So their biggest concern is really the time that they need to spend going through their stuff in order to ensure that everything is accurate and if they need more sample listings for subsequent months, which would be anything from January 2023 and on. So so far, everything is still on schedule for the January and February subsequent months that we've provided them.
So do they normally do a weekly update with you?
No, I guess normally, I don't normally, I don't like the word deal, but I don't normally communicate so much with Noel and with Richard. That's usually just the initial prep meetings. My communication has been mostly with Jason and then I see C, Richard and David, they're like their student analyst on everything. So Jason and myself is the one who does most of, I guess, the legwork and the actual going through the testing, making sure we have everything that, we have provided everything they need and we've been giving, it's a normal thing to get their listings with their, like we, they've asked for this on this day, we've submitted it on this day and, and so forth. There's some, sometimes there's a little bit of duplication just because it is, it's all digital, right? So or there could be a file was too large and so we do have access to their portal. Will we can just upload large files to their actual server, I guess, that they have an external server. But I don't think it's a bad thing to have a weekly update. Richard is, I think they're just trying to be more, I guess, forthright to say, we're doing our due diligence to check in to see how things are going. And then instead of, you know, just kind of leaving it in limbo, yeah.
So you feel that's beneficial, maybe that's something that should happen?
Yeah, I think it is, I think it's beneficial, I think it's beneficial for, then you don't run into that panic that I felt was a few weeks ago where it was like, okay, it's beginning of, or middle of March and now they're looking at our file and a bit of panic where I'm looking at our file and I'm like, okay, things are going great. Like, you know, we started sending everything at the requested time and I feel like when it's more apparent to them, they can ask those little questions instead of rushing towards the end and asking the questions.
So will that be something that we'll ask of them to do?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so maybe just one, one thing that's, it's in Jerry's report, but she didn't elaborate on. One of the things that's delayed it this year is the, the transfer of our tangible capital assets over to the new asset management system and she's not going to have those final numbers until tomorrow. So the conversation, we generally don't, we generally meet with Noel and Richard at the beginning of the process. The reason for today's meeting is there, Noel doesn't want his staff to feel pressed and possibly make mistakes trying to make the May 1st deadline, but they're pretty certain they would have it within a few days of that date. So if council, if, if they're done by May 1st, they're done by May 1st, but then there's not that pressure to try to get it squeezed in by them.
Yeah, we don't want them to be under pressure, we want them to do it.
Or, or our own staff, yeah.
But, but I think if the meetings are beneficial, I think we should continue to have those, like even into next year and.
Yeah, Noel will also be touching base with members of council as he finishes the process as well. That's part of the audit process. So Madam Mayor, if council wishes, we would appreciate a motion to request Metrics asks for an extension.
Council. Counselor Jessman. Makes that motion. All in favor, carried. Okay. The community graduation policy.
Madam Mayor.
Something we should have done 20 years ago.
Madam Mayor, Director Clark will address that issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Administration was asked to create a MOU for the community graduation. After talking to the Superintendent of the Fourth Millian School Division, he suggested that we do a policy and that would be better. So the presented policy just outlines the arena rates for the grad celebration as well as specifications on the banners and what size they need to be and when we need them. So we're recommending that council adopt the graduation policy as presented.
Is there any questions about the policy, council? Sounds good to everyone. Sounds good to everyone? Okay, good job, Jenna. Your first assignment. All right, could I have someone move that then, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. The next one is the briefing note. So I wasn't able to, my emails were not downloading in Mexico, so I would get the, our server for some reason wouldn't recognize. It kept saying that our server didn't recognize Mexico. Yeah, it said I wasn't safe. Whatever. They probably thought I was going to sell secrets to the cartel. But anyways, so my understanding was the meeting was with Minister Bosno, but it's with his...
Staff, his chief.
Staff. So I'm just wondering if we, like, the briefing note is good, but should we have something in there on the process that we went through? So they just staff understands the, I don't know.
The process of the grant application?
Yeah.
Okay, we can add.
But I don't know, is that something?
So when I spoke with Michael today, he said, because you're meeting with the staff, your main ask is for them to set up a meeting with Minister Bosno.
Okay.
But the second ask is also how, if we're not successful in this grant application, what should we be doing to make us more successful on the grant application? Because these are the people who essentially will walk forward with recommendations to the minister. But, yeah, we can add a little bit more on the last round that we...
And maybe we throw a little pitch in there for the cultural part, in that when it opens, that perhaps he could come up here, as it's the first park of its kind in Canada?
Yeah, I did slide this more toward the federal policies or federal priorities.
But this was a federal grant that we got, the tourism, so he would be the minister to come up here.
Oh, on the park, yes.
Yes. No, no, on the cultural park between the Denai, yeah. Or the, sorry, the Friendship Center and Town.
The Cultural Park, yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, both of those grants were through his department, the one for the community park as well.
All right. So that, did council want to have any input? Did you send the invitation to the rest of council?
No, I just got it this morning, or this afternoon, so I will...
So it's a Teams meeting? So on next Wednesday?
9:00 a.m. on Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, right at 9:00?
Also, I'll work on it tomorrow morning, but Michael's also suggested if any of you want to just talk to him about how to hit the speaking points and what we should be dealing with at the federal level, we can set up a meeting to do that before the meeting with Minister Bosno.
Okay. At 8:00 o'clock?
Actually, if you wanted to, that might be easier, right before the other meeting.
Well, maybe 8:30, because these guys like to sleep.
It's on Zoom, so it's...
Teams.
Teams, yeah.
Teams, yeah. So you can be at your own computer at home? No, I'm going to be at school, so... Okay. All right. That's just FYI. Or you didn't need anything, did you?
No, if you're happy with it, I'll just add a little more in the pathway, the journey we have taken to date.
Yeah, just maybe a little bit, say that we've struggled with our first application, and maybe we could send an invitation to the chief and Jordan as well. All right, correspondence for information. Is there anything in there that council would like to discuss? If not, could I have someone move it for information? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried. So thank you very much for joining us, and we will be moving into a closed session now. And could I have a motion for that, please? Counselor Librian? All in favor? Carried. So good evening, everybody, and thank you for attending our council meeting.